Good evening and welcome to the City of Roswell Mayor and City Council meeting for January 23rd, 2023. I am Mayor Kurt Wilson. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues and council members present. Councilmember Sarah Beeson, Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember Lee Hills, Councilmember William Mortland, Councilmember Michael Palermo, and Councilmember Peter Vanstrum. I'll now turn it over to our city administrator, Mr. Randy Knighton, to explain how the meeting is run. Mr. Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and good evening to everyone. In accordance with Section, Chapter 3.7, 0 of the City Code, the City Council shall hold regular public meetings. The purpose of these City Council meetings are for the public to participate and speak on agenda items, which constitute formal decisions by the elected body. These items are listed on the published agenda, which can be accessed via the city website prior to these meetings. This is a public meeting, and some items do require a formal public hearing. A significant and important component of City Council meetings are to hear directly from citizens on the items listed on the agenda. Public comments or questions are essential for mayor and council to incorporate as they contemplate each decision. Citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, and therefore, it is imperative for the mayor and council to hear from citizens in these meetings. If you would like to speak on an item, we ask that you fill out a comment card, which are located in the back of the room and at the podium, in order to ensure an accurate record of the meeting. We ask, of course, that everyone observe the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during these council meetings, which should be reflective of our great community. The mayor is the presiding officer of the meeting and will ensure the orderly exchange of comments, questions, and discussion leading to decision-making by the governing body. We also encourage those in attendance and the viewing audience to visit the city website for meetings, departmental information, and events. We also encourage you to review and participate in the various activities and offerings in the city. There are a number of events upcoming, which are scheduled in the City of Roswell, which the mayor will speak to in just a moment, which promote community, physical activity, and leisure as we make Roswell the number-one family community in America.
Mayor Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Knighton. Greatly appreciate the wonderful job you're always doing that, and obviously, it's a presiding officer. I'd be remiss, obviously, if I didn't call out William Mortland and make a warning before the meeting about some of his shenanigans and make sure that he holds those in check this evening, Councilmember Mortland. So just forewarning, we know how you like to get out of control, so please try to keep it under control this evening. At this time, I'd like to call Dory Griggs, City of Roswell Fire Department Chaplain, to the front through the invocation and moment of silence.
Please join me. Gracious and holy one, be with us council today as they celebrate both the service of Captain John E. Douglas and the distinguished service of the City of Roswell Water Utility. As the council moves through their agenda, keep them mindful of the best decisions for all residents. We ask for your guidance as a community to keep Roswell as the amazing, diverse city that we are. Please watch over our public safety personnel, fire, police, 911 communications, and emergency medical services. Keep them safe as they work to support our community. Grant us traveling mercies as each of us return to our homes. Amen.
Thank you, Roswell Fire Department Chaplain, Dory Griggs. As always, thank you, Dory. Great job. At this time, I'd like to call U.S. Army Captain John Edward Douglas, Sr., to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
Yes. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, Captain Douglas, would you please stay there? I'd like to have you come up and have the council come join me for the next item on the agenda under the mayor's report, which is the reading of a proclamation for the esteemed veteran of Roswell Award to U.S. Army Captain John Edward Douglas, Sr. Council.
You will. Proclamation, office of the mayor, Captain John Edward Douglas, Sr., esteemed veteran of Roswell. Whereas John Edward Douglas, Sr. started his military career at Roosevelt High, Atlanta, Georgia, in the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps program, and then attended North Georgia College in Delanica, Georgia. North Georgia College is one of only six senior military colleges in the United States, and during its time there, John achieved Distinguished Military Student and Distinguished Military Graduate. Upon graduation in May, 1964, he was commissioned to Second Lieutenant, United States Army Transportation Corps. On July 1st, 1964, John reported to Fort Campbell, Kentucky, and was assigned to the 534th Medium Truck Company, and in 1965, John graduated from Organizational Maintenance Officers Corps in Fort Knox, Kentucky. And whereas in late August, 1964, John's unit was sent on temporary duty to Fort Bragg, North Carolina, to support the 82nd Airborne Division as aggressors in a large training maneuver, Air Assault II, to prepare the 11th Air Assault to change designation and become the First Air Cavalry before being deployed to Vietnam in mid-1965. In the spring of 1965, John volunteered to serve in Vietnam and was transferred to the 151st Light Truck Company and deployed by ship to Vietnam. He was a platoon leader and operations officer with primary duty of running combat convoys in the central high lines in support of the 101st Airborne Division and the First Air Cavalry Division. November 1965, he spent three weeks in Placu as Transportation Corps liaison for the Second Corps during the Idrang Valley period. And whereas in the first weeks of running convoys to Anh Cay, John's unit was assigned to transporting basic supplies to the advance party of the First Air Cavalry. In this capacity, it was not unusual to be followed by following the bulldozers as they cleared a road in the jungle. Highway 9, running from Qanong to Placu through Anh Cay, was not a secure road at night and not completely secure during the day. Seven bridges had been blown up by the Vietcong, which made transport impossible, and engineers quickly built temporary bridges made out of prefabricated steel known as Bailey Bridges. The 101st Airborne did a heroic job securing these newly-built bridges 24 hours a day so missions could be carried out successfully. In June 1966, John's unit was relocated to Camran Bay, and John had the distinction of taking the first combat convoys out of Camran Bay to Na Trong and Pa Rong. And whereas in July 1966, John Edward Douglas, Sr. received his honorable discharge, and the United States Army awarded the following medals: Vietnam Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal, and Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal with 1960 device. In June 1970, John was promoted to captain while continuing to serve in the United States Army Reserve. And whereas, John has been a Roswell resident for 30 years, serving as a leader in the Atlanta business community, the local Vietnam veterans groups, and the University of North Georgia alumni. Now, therefore, I, Courtney M. Wilson, Mayor of the City of Roswell, do hereby name Captain John Edward Douglas, Sr., esteemed veteran of Roswell, and call upon all our citizens to recognize his outstanding service to our country and our community, and that there is no higher calling than those who have served in the United States Armed Forces.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a few moments and to, please be seated, please be seated. I hate it when the pastor lets us keep standing and doesn't let us sit down. But I wanted to thank, obviously, the mayor and the council for this recognition, and I want to publicly also say that I appreciate the fact that you have such a program to recognize your citizens, and particularly as it continues to represent what I think the City of Roswell is, which is somewhat a hometown kind of a place, but the values of patriotism and service are high on the list of things that need to be recognized. And it's obvious that, as it has been recognized, in fact, was already mentioned here, as one of the top 10 places in the state to live, and it's because of things like this that help us come together and feel support. Obviously, I'd like to also thank my wife, 58 and a half years of support. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. That's a long time to put up with me. But in particular, during the year that I served overseas, and even though we were married for a year before I went, I had a two-and-a-half-month tour in the field away from her for, actually, we'd only been married a couple of months at that point, and then I went to a school for another two and a half months. So actually, the first year, we were separated by six months before I actually went overseas. But it's, I think, one of the things that gets overlooked so much are the families of those who serve. The spouses have to double up with all the extra things as it relates to all responsibilities of a parent or just as a spouse in supporting a family. They often get overlooked, so I want to make sure people know that. And I also appreciate the fact that I've got some family and friends here and neighbors and even guys that I went to grammar school and high school with that still are willing to come and support me in something like this. But to finish up, I really want to recognize the Atlanta Vietnam Veterans Business Association. How about you guys stand it up? Would you do that for me, guys? This is a, this is a one-of-a-kind organization. This is a, this is a one-of-a-kind organization. We're the only one like it in the nation. It was actually the brainchild of some guys sitting around a bar 40 years ago who decided they needed to change the image of the Vietnam veteran, because the media always has us as Hells Angels or baby killers or things that just were not appropriate and did not really represent the individuals that had served. So they started this organization, and it is a professional organization. They wanted to change the image, as I said, and as you can see, there's nobody with long hair and they don't, they don't have, they don't have their Hells Angels jackets on or any of that stuff. But the organization was recognized by the Department of Defense on several occasions as being unique. We were asked to go and be a part of special ceremonies at the Wall in Washington, D.C. We have recognized individuals, 30 or so, around the Atlanta area for their service and their, those that didn't make it home. We, beyond that, though, it is, this is not an organization that on Friday night is going to have a beer and sit around and tell war stories. This is an active group that does a lot of community service. We have guys that, twice a month, we man the USO at the airport. We've got attorneys who help with legal problems. We've got guys who volunteer with the veterans' courts. We've got people on the board of the national cemeteries. We just go on and on. But the last thing that I want to mention that we have started, and that's scholarships. We are very pleased that we've been able to have relationships now with four, two universities and two colleges where we have endowment scholarships that are going to continue to help veterans of the future. But anyway, I just had to recognize these guys. They are really brothers in service and brothers in every way. So again, thank you so much to the mayor and the council for this recognition. May God bless Roswell, State of Georgia, and the United States of America. John Douglas, Sr. Thank you, sir. John, stay here. We'd like a picture, would you?
This is you, sir.
I was out of our balls.
I'd like to get a picture with the, up here to the dais. We'd get the whole group up here.
Yeah, I want to do that now, and then we'll go downstairs and take some more pictures, guys. Come on, y'all, coming up.
Yes.
We're going to go around the podium. Come around the other side. Now we can get some elevation support.
Yeah. We get, we got to get the elevation.
Yeah, yeah. If you gentlemen can come over here, maybe? Can you come over here to the side over here?
You come to the council meeting? You have to stay in the direction.
We're donors.
And sir in the grave, can I ask you to go right over here at the end also? Yeah, right there, yeah. Thank you so much. Go in the top row?
It's always fun. Thank you so much for all those great folks being here with us tonight, and obviously to Captain Douglas. Thank you, sir. The last item on the mayor's report tonight is upcoming events in the City of Roswell. But as I already mentioned, I guess I am the presiding officer of this meeting, and I've already been basically patted down pretty heavily and intimidated by one of the council members, Councilmember Will Mortland, who's insisted that he start off these comments. So Councilmember Mortland, would you like to initiate the upcoming events in the City of Roswell, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is, this is just a personal, personal statement, and that is, as everybody knows, last week, my birthplace of Selma, Alabama, was hit pretty hard by the tornadoes, and I would just like to take this opportunity to thank everybody that has reached out with thoughts, prayers, concerns, bits of offering. It is very much appreciated, and yeah, it's going to be a long time before Selma rebounds from this. So it is very, very much appreciated, everybody that has reached out and provided well wishes. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Will. I wish you'd warned me that you were going to, I thought you were going to, once again, you got me. Thanks you. Selma, Alabama, is Will's town of origin, and obviously asking for your prayers and thoughts in Selma. Thank you, Will. Let me just touch base for a minute on the upcoming events in the City of Roswell. Today is Monday, January 3rd. This Sunday, January 29th, kicks off the Roswell Roots. And Roswell Roots Festival is a community-wide, month-long celebration that highlights and honors Black History Month through cultural, historic, and educational programs and events. This year is the 22nd Annual Festival, which will kick off with events at the Roswell Cultural Arts Center, starting this Sunday on January 29th. And that begins with Lyrics and Lear, an evening of poetry and music at 7:30 PM, right behind us at the Cultural Arts Center. Those tickets are on sale now. Lee, what's the website? That's right. Go to Roswellroots.com. Also is the Black Opry Review on February 3rd at 7:30 PM. The Spirit of Harriet Tubman on February 3rd and 4th at 10:00 AM. The festival will continue through the month of February with many opportunities to connect to Black history, art, and culture. I believe, Lee, if I remember right, and Will, Roswell has more events of any other city, I think, maybe outside of Atlanta, and maybe more so than Atlanta, celebrating Black History Month.
Yes, sir. From my understanding, this is the premier show. This is, this is the place to be for February for Black History Month, and they've done, the Department of Recreation, Parks, Historical Assets, Cultural Affairs, coupled with the partner groups such as the Grove Way, have done a great job at putting this together. It's an amazing list. It is something to truly, not only every weekend, but basically every other day, have something to do related to the Roots program here.
I think I saw on TV, I saw you with Paul Milliken, you and Lee this week, doing a promo on the Roswell Roots, and the lyrics and Lear poet and violinist did an intro, if I remember right, and they're unbelievable. So go to, what's the website, Lee?
Roswellroots.com.
Roswellroots.com, and check out 22 events in the month of February. Also want to make aware, everyone aware, that Super Museum Sunday on February 5th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, featuring Leveling the Playing Field, a focus on Black sports history, and includes a conversational panel moderated by former NBA All-Star Joe Barry Carroll, with former Roswell natives who played for schools like Bailey Johnson, Roswell High, and the city's recreational teams. This will take place at Barrington Hall, Bullock Hall, and Smith Plantation. That's February 5th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Also inspired, a student art exhibit in partnership with Fulton County Schools. That reception's on Wednesday, February 1st, from 3:00 to 5:30 PM here in the Rotunda at City Hall. This exhibit is free and on display at City Hall until March the 10th. It features large-scale artwork from Roswell schools that focus on the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History's annual theme, Black Resistance. These are just a few of the events featured during Roswell Roots this year. The celebration of Black culture is unlike any other experience and has nothing and has something for the entire community to enjoy. For a complete list of events and information, visit, Lee?
Roswellroots.com.
Roswellroots.com. Thanks very much. Appreciate it, everybody. We hope that you'll take advantage of one of the 22 events that we'll be celebrating here in the month of February, beginning next Sunday, January 29th. All right, with no further ado, the next item is a department award, and we're very blessed to have a very large contingent from our amazing water department. Our Public Works Director, Sharon Amazo, would you please come forward to announce this award?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is going to recognize the City of Roswell Water Utility for receiving the Distribution System Excellence Platinum Award. We've received the gold award for five years, and now we are receiving the platinum award for the first time. You all have heard me talk about the utility. You know how proud I am of them. So rather than me talk about them, I want to invite all the folks from our distribution team to come up here and join me up here. And before I introduce you to Chris Boyd, who you all know as the Water Utility Manager, I'm going to ask each one of these folks behind me to come up and introduce themselves to you. I want them to tell you what their job is here at the city, what their title is, and how long they've been with the City of Roswell, because this is a fantastic crew. Patty, you're going to go first.
Hi, I'm Patty. I am the admin for the Water Department.
How long you been with us?
I've been with the City of Roswell for seven years.
All right.
My name's Jason. I'm the distribution supervisor. I worked for Roswell for 13 years.
Hi, my name is Arthur Breckbill. I'm a meteor technician. I've been working here for three years.
Hello, my name is AJ. Working for the City of Roswell Water Utility for about two years now.
Hey, my name's Kyle Brookshire. I'm a foreman for the Roswell Water Utility, and I've worked here a little over six years.
Hello, I'm Cory. I'm a foreman, and I've been here eight years.
Hey, I'm John. I've been here, I'm the field service rep, and I've been with the city for almost five years.
I'm Casey. I'm the Water Utility Inspector, Backflow Specialist, and I've been here 17 years.
I'm Chris Boyd. I'm the Water Utility Manager, and I've been here 27-plus years, and starting my 28th.
We'd also like to introduce you to Paula Days, who's, okay, here we go. She's from GAWP. She's going to tell you a little bit about this award.
Yes, thank you, Sharon. Good evening to the mayor, to the council members, residents, my colleagues, and friends. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. My name is Paula Days, and I am a junior trustee with the American Waterworks Association, the Georgia section, and this is the world's largest association of water supply professionals with over 51,000 members representing the full spectrum of the water community. Georgia Association of Water Professionals and the American Waterworks Association, they have a longstanding relationship that benefits Georgia's drinking water and the water environment. For those of you who are not familiar with the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, this is a not-for-profit association with current membership of nearly 4,000-plus members, made up of water and wastewater treatment plant operators, managers, municipal and industrial officials, engineers, manufacturers, and other concerned Georgia water resources residents, colleagues, engineers, et cetera. Our membership consists largely of the professionals who implement the state and federal water supply, water protection, and water resources laws and regulations, and our chief purpose is to educate and assist those who have an interest in the proper management and protection of Georgia's water resources. GAWP is the state's premier professional association for water, wastewater and regulated issues. We were founded in 1932 and started the first license program for water professionals in Georgia. So for over 85 years, the Georgia Association of Water Professionals has provided the bulk of certified professional training for water and wastewater operators here in Georgia. The Georgia Association of Water Professionals is the nation's second-largest state-level association of water professionals, and we are formally affiliated with several other national professional organizations, including the American Waterworks Association, the Water Environment Federation, the American Water Resources Association, and the Georgia Water Wise Council. GAWP is a respected and well-accepted, welcomed authority on water-related issues and is routinely turned to by the media, by elected officials, and the public for accurate water-related information and assistance. So now, on to the award. During the recent 2022 GAWP Fall Conference, the City of Roswell was presented with a GAWA Platinum Award for Distribution System Excellence by earning a quantitative inspection score of 95 or higher of a possible 100 points. This is the fifth, not the first, not the second, not the third, not the fourth, but the fifth consecutive time that the City of Roswell has won this award, achieving the Platinum Award status. The purpose of this award is annually to recognize water distribution systems that have operated in an outstanding manner. So a little bit about the process. Each nominated system receives a packet that includes a distribution system water audit sheet and an evaluator's guide. The system manager reviews these in order to gather the appropriate information for review during the system's audit. Prior to the Fall Conference, a group of distribution system committee members visit each eligible system and spend about four to six hours inspecting every aspect of the distribution system. Every award applicant has the benefit of having their distribution management system evaluated by a team of experienced auditors, who are comprised of utility staff, consulting engineers, utility contractors, and other water distribution professionals. The auditors evaluate hundreds of pages of documentation, and many specific areas are surveyed. There are many opportunities to get nicked from the points you need. However, the City of Roswell was exceptional in achieving the score to receive this gold award. The GAWA Distribution Systems Committee sponsors the Georgia Distribution System Excellence Award for utilities that want to participate and achieve silver and gold status based on the system's audited performance. The platinum status is achieved after five consecutive gold awards. This water distribution system program focuses on furthering the performance of distribution systems across Georgia and strives to support water utilities across Georgia to improve the performance, the safety, the reliability of their distribution systems through collective knowledge sharing. Chris Boyd, join me to receive. Chris Boyd, join me to receive this award. It is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give him a round of applause. The City of Roswell, the City of Roswell should be proud of its staff for achieving this impressive level of achievement, being the 2022 recipient of the Platinum Award for the Water Distribution System Excellence. This is an important accomplishment, and it speaks volumes about the exceptional commitment and level of service that the City of Roswell provides their customers. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Paula.
Michael, do you want to cut him off? Because, you know, he's got a long acceptance speech. You want to beat him to the punch, or you want to wait just a second?
I want to make sure to praise this great organization, but Chris, I definitely want to hear, he's had the most practice more than anybody for all the awards he's gotten to win.
The only thing I want to say is last year, we came up here, we got gold award, and I wanted to really highlight that, you know, this award is for these guys and the work that they do to make our system run so great. And I'm really ecstatic that they showed up tonight to be recognized, because this award is for them. It's also for you, for helping to fund our department to make sure we're able to do the things that we need to do. So, thank you.
Chris, thank you. Sharon, congratulations. Congratulations to all of you, but I do have to, I do have a downer. I was told before this award this evening that the council member who served as a liaison in 2022 feels like he deserves the most credit for receiving the Platinum Award from going to Platinum. That'd be Councilmember Mike Palermo. And I know, Mike, you had a couple of comments, so.
I do. So I just, I want to congratulate this group and how much I appreciate it. So as someone that's been appointed by two mayors to serve as two different times as liaison, getting to work with two excellent department directors, and at the same time, truly, it's these guys that are absolutely incredible. So Patty, I mean, I can't imagine how many Roswell residents she's talked into setting up for aquahawk and making sure their water's being watched, but then also for these guys, just the great feedback and compliments that have come in from so many residents. I've seen firsthand out there, pitch black, and seeing a City of Roswell truck, and someone, one of you guys, I couldn't tell, was pitch black, but clearly, clearly one of you guys fixing an issue. And so just, just long hours, and this team working really hard for the people of Roswell. So the award is definitely well-deserved, and thank you for everything you do for the people of Roswell.
So just a quick commercial. Forty percent of our residents are lucky enough to get this premium water from you great gentlemen and ladies. Thank you. The City of Roswell does have pristine water. We're lucky enough to get it at City Hall, and it's better than the water I get at my house on Cave and Drive from Fulton County. You guys do an amazing job. Paula, thank you from the GAWP for being here and for presenting this great people, great bunch of people this award. Thank you for being with us today. Thank you for the honor. So with, does any other council people like to make any comments? All right, so with y'all, let's take a picture. How about that?
There you go. All right, smile. Great. Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
You know you got to stay for the rest of the meeting. Come on.
Thank you, Paula, by the way, from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. Thank you so much for presenting, for the presentation of the Platinum Award. All right, next is the consent agenda. Does council have any question or comments regarding any items on the consent agenda? With no questions from council, is there anyone here, a Roswell resident, who would like to speak on the consent agenda? Being that no Roswell residents want to speak on the consent agenda, I'd like to bring it back to council for any comments or questions, a second round? Being that there are none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion from Councilmember Christine Hall. Do I have a second? I have a second, and it from Councilmember Sarah Beeson. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And the consent agenda passing unanimously, thank you very much. All right, next is Community Development Department. Councilmember Palermo, would you read the community development item, please, sir?
Approval of the text amendment to the Unified Development Code, Article 9 Use Provisions, and Articles 4, 5, and 6 to allow defined uses in industrial light district. This is the first reading. Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Davidson, would you please read the ordinance, sir?
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Article 4 Corridor Nodes Districts, Article 5 Downtown Historic Districts, Article 6 Employment Districts, and Article 9 Use Provisions. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend Article 4, Section 4.2, or 4.5.2 Use Table, Article 5, Section 5.5.2 Use Table, Article 6, Section 6.5.2 Use Table, and Article 9, 9.5.10 Retail Sales of Unified Development Code, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and if approved, this is the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Gaines, would you explain the item, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Evening, council. I stated this is the first read of this item, which was initiated by the Community Development Transportation Committee back on December 13th, which is review the basic facts about the item, as well as go over the recommendation that came forward from the Planning Commission, which was delivered at their meeting last Tuesday, January 17th.
All right.
So we'll go through these use tables here briefly that kind of, that outline the uses and how they're allowed in each of the zoning districts. Biggest change, all the changes are related to the items that are in red. The idea was to move all of these items from some sort of allowable use in the non-industrial or non-working districts, and to then put them into those industrial districts, particularly the IL industrial light district. So the original proposal, the biggest change on this page is the moving of dry cleaning establishments that was going to be removed entirely initially, but the item came forward with allowing it as a permitted use in the commercial heavy district. Every other item that you see in red would be completely eliminated from the zonings under the corridors and nodes districts. You'll see the same here involving automotive-related uses, used vehicle sales and car washes particularly, which had some conditional use provisions in some of the corridors and nodes districts. Those would be eliminated under this proposed ordinance. Okay. Moving on to the downtown districts, again, everything that you see in red would be completely stricken. Now, moving on to the employment districts, specifically industrial light, you see that several of these items are now permitted uses in industrial light under this proposal, but also limited in some cases as well, particularly the pawn shops and the title loans and check Then also making some changes with the automotive-related uses as well, and the employment districts making used vehicle sales a conditional use in industrial light, and keeping car washes as a conditional use in industrial light while eliminating the conditional use industrial, in industrial flex for both of these use categories. In addition, this ordinance includes changes to Article 9 Use Provisions, specifically 9510, where we include definitions for CBD shop as well as a dispensary. And I won't read those verbatim, but I will state that these are in direct response to the moratorium that was adopted by the council a while back, or not that long ago, but a while back, in regards to locating legal marijuana use, or marijuana dispensary locations as has been provided for by the state. Also included, an updated definition for vape shops here as well, and that definition does continue, on to the next page, or the next slide, I should say. Let me know if you'd like me to go back, and I'll happily do so. As I mentioned, Planning Commission heard this item for consideration last Tuesday, January 17th. Their formal recommendation to the mayor and city council is for approval with two recommended changes to what was proposed in the initial ordinance. The cleaning establishments, the dry cleaners, the laundry drop-off facilities and whatnot that were, as proposed, to remain as a permitted use in commercial heavy, they are in fact recommending that none of the proposed changes for that particular use category be...
Jason, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Is there a change here from the Planning Commission, from council's committee? Looks like on what you've got there on number one, did Planning Commission add an item there? Did they add dry cleaning?
They did not add dry cleaning. And I was explaining that. What they've done is they've recommended that the changes suggested in this new ordinance not be adopted and that the use be left as it is. So they recommend that the use be allowed, continue to be allowed where it is currently, and none of those proposed changes are made. That's their recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Councilmember Hall?
Just to clarify, point of clarification, is that the definition that is currently in the UDC for this item?
Talking about number one specifically?
Number one specifically.
That is the description, that is the use description that is listed in the ordinance. And I can show you right there, all personal service except as listed below, and in that first line there in red.
Thank you.
And so that was their first recommendation, to not make any of the changes related to those personal service uses. And then the second recommendation is to add the CDB, excuse me, CBD shops as a conditional use in the commercial heavy zoning district. Those were the two proposed changes to go along with their recommendation for approval of the proposed ordinance. And just for reference, the personal service use or description is allowed in the following districts as a permitted use, and then it's allowed as a limited use in the office district, office residential, and office park. So again, to reiterate, number one, as far as the recommendation from the Planning Commission, is to allow personal service uses, including the drop-off laundry and dry cleaners to remain in these zoning districts. With that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So I certainly want, I certainly look forward to discussing this tonight, because I think there absolutely are some, some great enhancements to our zoning code and setting up the uses that make sense in the different areas. And I think we had a healthy discussion at the initiation. I'd like to certainly consider that. And in doing so, I guess first I'll reference the Planning Commission's recommendations. So regarding the first recommendation, I do, I do have some concerns with just the aspect and the potential of keeping in mind that this is, this is not controlling where, where these establishments currently exist. It's for future new ones. And, and I do think it makes sense that for future new ones, keeping in mind that anyone currently acting as one of these businesses is already grandfathered in, but any new one, I think it does make sense to have the appropriate area, and I think CH is an appropriate area for, for these, for these cleaning establishments. And I believe Mr. Davidson or Mr. Gaines, the way, the way it came out of initiation is dry cleaning, is that a separate item that's not included? Mr. Davidson?
Yes, it remained in as a personal service establishment.
Okay. So I think it does, I think it does make sense for the new definition, and for that to, to be within CH. We had, I think, I thought we had a healthy dialogue with that in committee, and so that's, that certainly is my preference tonight.
Mike, just for clarity, and that references on your package, page 53 of what you did in committee, and that is at the bottom there, cleaning establishment or laundry laundromat or washing area. I believe that's what you, what the committee reckoned, came out of committee.
That came out of committee, and that also was, had a majority support out of initiation. And I, I think it makes sense to, to leave that as is, out of, came out of initiation on that one. That being said, for item number two, I, I think, I think it does make sense to, to discuss it being a, CBD shops being a conditional use within CH, so that being the addition. So it'd be permitted in IL, and then we add that CBD shops be a conditional use in the, in the CH zoning. Also, just in the spirit of compromise and really hoping for a great discussion and the possibility for perhaps, for a, for unanimous vote, I would even want to discuss, just as, as the Planning Commission suggested, that CBD shops be a conditional use in CH, so that addition, for the point of discussion. And I just want to, want to disclose there that I'm really open to this council's discussion around it, but also want to discuss the potential of dispensaries being added as a conditional use in CH, and I want to discuss that. And then another item that was, that I, that I heard was brought up from, from discussion tonight, and just, just wanting to understand frankly where, where, where hopefully this can become a unanimous vote, is want to discuss the, the pros or cons of tattoo parlor being conditional, added as a conditional use in CH. So, so those are three things that I would like to discuss, CBD dispensary and tattoos as a conditional use in CH, which still is greatly limiting it from where it is today, and much more narrowing it, and with a conditional use, there's always the opportunity for public comment, and of course, a public decision by, by mayor and council. That's one thing I'd like to discuss. The other thing I'd like to discuss is in the definition of CBD shop. In looking closer, so in that, although it doesn't show inside the packet, it does show on this, on this screen, it was discussed of removing and garments, and, and I actually would like to discuss us removing personal care and garments. That being said, in looking closer at the definition, those are just to be examples, in which case, to really have the impact of removing personal care and garments, I believe we'd actually have to update the definition to say this excludes personal care and garments. So those are, those are the things I'd like to discuss with this council to, to just basically hear thoughts, and, and... hear thoughts and, and, and just, just curious if, if, if this is something that, that would get us towards a unanimous vote, or, or if this would, would not get towards a unanimous vote big. But again, I do want to make sure that we absolutely are, are moving forward text amendments for section nine point five point ten, because I think there is so much important stuff in there. For example, two key items, vape shops, which certainly have an effect with child, with children as well as the character of our community, as well as frankly with, with used car lots and just the, the, the large number of yards, used car lots we have in Roswell. I do think it makes sense that we're reducing the, the locations that's available. So I, I think this is some, some great updates here and just would love to discuss with this council on, on if we can, if we can come to an agreement on it.
All right, so Mike, thank you. So just thank you, council member Mike Palermo and community development liaison Mike Palermo. For clarity of discussion, can you go back to the Planning Commission page, just head up? All right, so the suggestion for conversation for the council that is on the table from Mike, and obviously this is a conversation I'm sure will go several ways, I just want to bring up what Mike has brought up. Obviously to strike the first item from the Planning Commission recommendation, on the second item is to not only add CBD shops, CBD shops as a conditional use in the CH, but also to add dispensaries in CH, and to also add tattoo parlors in CH. Is that correct, sir? That's the item number two, conditional, as a conditional use in CH for CBD shops, dispensaries and tattoos, tattoo parlors?
That's, that's some feedback, that's some feedback I've heard from discussion.
All right, so that's number two. And then number three is a definition, a clarification of definition on CBD shops themselves. Is that correct?
All right, so the council, yes, sir. Councilmember Beeson.
Mine pertains specifically to the line item related to vape shops. A concern I have, first quick question, do we currently allow vape shops in industrial light? No.
Well, it's, it's a new definition, so.
Got it.
Yeah, so we do not.
Because the concern that I have is that, taking a look at Fulton County Tax Assessor's website, our industrial light and zoned properties appear to be some of the cheapest real estate in the city of Roswell. So if we're funneling the market towards that, are we going to create more vape shops in one specific area than normal economics would typically predicate because the fact it's going towards cheaper land? Which also to me prompted the question, and this might be a David Davidson question, would we, because I know the goal is to try to detract from these in Roswell, is that's not, A, the best and highest use of our land, but also, B, potential for health issues. Do we have an option for an additional excise tax on vape-related items to be collected at the municipal level?
Councilmember Palermo.
So this is actually something that I asked, is he here? He is not here, Mr. Luckett. So Mr. Luck, oh, he is here. I'm guessing you might have done some recent research on this if Mr. Davidson doesn't know off, offhand.
I have not looked at that, so if Ryan has looked at that, that would be great.
All right, so I was curious if we have the option in Roswell to create an additional excise tax specifically on vape-related products.
I did do some research into that and could not find any other jurisdiction that had something specific on vape shops. I'm not seeing it be done, but I didn't find any examples of that.
David, do you want to make any further comment on that from a legal perspective?
So I, I do know that it, the federal government has taken a stance on, on vaping and on vape shops. I would be careful on trying to overstep our bounds on it. I haven't done the research. I just have looked in to this prior, and I know that the federal government has taken action.
Would you comment, David, and kind of further elaborate and perhaps, for lack of a better term, inform our fellow residents as well as our council what the state's position historically and generally is on municipalities creating taxation revenue structures outside of the prescribed pieces under the state?
They do not allow it.
Generally speaking, they say they frown on it would be an understatement. Not say it can't happen, but I, the chances would be, I would be surprised.
I guess the reason I ask is if our goal is to try to decrease the likelihood of having significantly higher number of vape shops, especially in specific areas or compared to our surrounding cities, if we're exploring all of our options on the table for curbing that growth. Not saying I necessarily implore against it, mostly just trying to learn our options.
Any other thoughts, comments from council? Councilmember Worthler.
To, to further councilperson Beeson's last statement, the, the only place I'm aware of in America that has done a tax similar to what she's, she's referencing is Boulder, Colorado. When it comes to sugar, they did a sugar tax on soda, any kind of bottled soda that you would buy out of the grocery, well, Minute Store or Quick Trip, you know, one of those type things. And the tax that they levied off of those products went directly into the Parks and Recreation Fund. However, the, the big boys came in and sued, Coke, Pepsi, so on, and they were tied up in so much litigation for so long, the city said, you know what, this is just not worth it, and so they backed out of it. That's the only time I'm, I'm aware of there being an excise tax like this.
Just as a general comment, and I know it's always, if you, so if you're an existing vape shop, CBD shop, tattoo parlor, any of these businesses are currently under consideration, this does not impact you.
Correct.
One iota, zero. As a matter of fact, it might even be a positive impact because you might potentially have not as much competition. So it might be a positive thing for me from a business perspective. Don't want to say that, but you know, with too much prescription, because I don't know what the marketplace is going to do. But this is in relation to new potential businesses under very short criteria. So just go back to what's on the table by councilmember Palermo, is to strike the first recommendation from the Planning Commission. And on the second item is to add CBD shops as conditional use in the CH, add dispensaries as conditional use in the CH, add to, to tattoo parlors as conditional use in the CH. Is that right, Councilmember Palermo?
If, if that's something that this council fully support, then, then yes. And, and I certainly don't want to put any councilmembers on the spot, nor would they be required to answer, but I, I certainly would be curious to hear from Councilman Vanstrom and Councilmember Beeson if, if they would support it along the lines if, if it was basically what, what was initiated with the updated definition of CBD and the addition of conditional in CH for dispensary CBD tattoo, if that's something that they would be, be supporting or not.
Peter.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Mike.
My request was to expand this. I just felt like it was so restrictive in, in one little corner industrial light that wasn't even access to, direct access to Main Thoroughfare or on a Main Thoroughfare. So in the spirit of, of give and take that this council does so well together, I, I like the way this is, this is headed, but I will, I will, I will come back with a question to the rest of the council. Are they okay with expanding this as conditional to CH? Because that's, that is exactly the direction I would like to take this in, exactly for those items that have been added. And I would like to hear that that's something that the council would be, would be happy with, because I, I do like this compromise as far as making this more available for the, for the average business person to still have business in Roswell in an appropriate area.
Thank you, thank you, Peter. Sarah?
I would agree with Councilmember Vanstrom's points. I think based off of, if, and I'm far more of a wonk than I think most, if I can refer to ComDev to maybe pull up a zoning map for others, am I mistaken in saying that commercial heavy is only on arterial roads? Is that correct? So Highway nine, Holcomb Bridge Road, I think that's it. No, not it.
Commercial heavy is located from, on Highway nine, Alfred Highway from Mansell Road to the city Alfred Alumis.
Okay, and then that's true for Holcomb Bridge as well?
No, Holcomb Bridge is CX, commercial mixed use, and CC, commercial corridor. There is no CH, commercial heavy zoning on Holcomb Bridge Road.
So I will, I will proffer the devil's advocate side on that. If we open it only to commercial heavy, then that means that none of these businesses would exist in east Roswell, but would only exist in west Roswell. Is that correct?
In terms of new businesses?
New businesses.
Yes, yes. Existing businesses would be grandfathered in as non-conforming uses.
I'm good.
Thanks, Sarah. Christine. To defer for a minute? Yes, sir. Michael.
Thank you. So I, I'd say confidently that I've, that I've heard from a lot of, of our residents on the east side, and I have not once heard them saying they want, they want it to be easier for a CBD shop or a tattoo parlor. What, what they're looking for, that I've heard from so many different residents, is, is something for a more consistent destination, et cetera, which, which I feel is what CX is built for. CX is built for as, as really true mixed use.
CH.
No, exactly. That's why I'm saying CX I do not think is appropriate for, for this, because with CX and the goal of it true being more, more mixed use, more destinations, and frankly, family-friendly destinations, then I think CH is more appropriate for this. If, without a doubt, I, I think, I think we have a very responsive city government. If we do hear from a lot of our residents on the east side saying they want it to be easier for, for some of these uses, then I think there's no, no quicker government that would respond to the wishes of our residents. But, but this, this is something where I think it is creating flexibility for a business owner that wants to, to open up a tattoo parlor or a CBD shop, but I think still helping us regulate in the right way. But also that being said, a lot of the parcels on the east side are actually smaller, so there, there is always the ability, with any of these changes, there's always the ability for any, for any business owner to request a rezoning. So we're not even saying that it can't go on Holcomb Bridge Road. We're just saying if you're going to request it on Holcomb Bridge Road, it has to be the CH or the IL zoning, in which case the mayor and council would properly weigh in with, with great public input, so.
I got a question, just curious. So I think Brixmore has purchased two or three significant properties on the east side of Roswell, two that I know of, potentially three. Peter, you could probably help me out, you guys. And Brixmore is the largest real estate tenant, landowner retail-wise in the United States, if that's right, Peter? Have they suggested any interest in leasing out any of their spaces in terms of any criteria of tattoo parlors or CBD shops or vape shops, or has that come to mind and said, hey, we've got to do this on the east side and the properties we have invested, it's, we think this is in our best interest financially?
None of my conversations with Brixmore have, have led to that discussion. And, and they've been working with us on master planning conversation, so we have been talking to them quite openly, and it is, it is not something that, that they see as profitable for them at this time in the direction they'd like to head.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Peter. Yes, ma'am. Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to further comment on Councilmember Palermo's ideas and thoughts on the east side on Holcomb Bridge and say that this mayor and council for the last year has worked very hard to, and I'm going to use the word protect, the east side of Roswell and worked very hard on what comes in. There's very little left for us to influence. Obviously, businesses change, merchants, you know, change hands and that kind of thing. But I, I would like to say this is a, a place where I feel like, of course, they could make a request, anybody can make a request, but I think this is a nice protection factor for an area that we're working very hard to improve.
Thank you, Lee. Christine, did you want me to come back to you? Yes, ma'am.
No, I just, I, I agree with the CX, or I mean with the CH. That, that just makes sense. Again, very limited amount of properties on the east side, as Councilmember Palermo and Hills have said, and Vanstrom, Councilmember Vanstrom, I, I have not heard requests on the east side for these types of businesses or complaints of lack of these types of businesses on that side, so.
But it is fair to say, Christine, that if you hear from the forty thousand resident, our fellow residents who live on the east side of four hundred in Roswell, that if they come to you and say, by gosh, we want these businesses, this council will respond and do it.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. Sarah.
Just a point of clarity. Does Councilmember Vanstrom want all of the redefined uses to be in both industrial light as well as heavy commercial, or is it just the ones that Councilmember Palermo outlined?
I think, sorry, I don't want to answer for Peter. Let me just tell you, I think this is the way I structured it. So just for clarity for me, since, you know, the structure, what's on the table in terms of the conversation, unless it's changed, was strike number one from the Planning Commission recommendation. On number two, yes, add CBD shops as conditional use in the CH, as well as adding dispensaries as conditional use in the CH and tattoo parlors in the CH. And I think that's what Peter was, sorry, I don't want to speak for Peter, but I just want to, clarity in terms of what's on, what's on the, what's on the dais.
Yes. Does that answer your question?
So, yes, so in other words, you are amenable to Councilmember Palermo's.
Yeah, and as far as, as far as IL, that was, that was the other part of your question. I, I personally, this is, this is, this is all give and take. I, I see CH as the, as the best location for, for any of these businesses. I think they would choose CH. But I also have a council who's in favor of, of industrial light, and it doesn't really impact my decision either way on industrial light, because I think if I'm a businessman, I'm, I'm going to CH over industrial light.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, I, I agree with the use or the agreement that we're going to be using commercial heavy or CH for the uses. There's not going to be any, I'm just trying to make sure, I'm going through my head in terms of the other definitions that would not be included in that, and that would be the used car lot would not be, moving forward, would not be included. The vape shop, the psychic, Palmist? And is there any other ones that I'm missing?
Pawn shop.
Pawn shop and title, title.
Where did we put the cleaning establishments?
Okay, so those would remain in industrial light only.
They all too would remain in. Yeah, so, and just for clarity, the Planning Commission recommendation's different when it came out of committee.
Right.
What came out of committee was that the cleaning establishments, not including dry cleaning. So dry cleaning is, just take that out of the conversation, forgive me. So cleaning establishments or laundry or drop-off facilities, laundromats, wash interiors are also CH, if I remember correctly, both IL and CH, correct? Jackie, Jason, right?
Yes, sir.
So that's a little distinction as well, Sarah, just that, that's a distinction as well. But it was already, you guys agreed upon that in committee, if that makes sense. Okay, so I'm going to take the conversation away from council for a minute. With council's permission, and I'm going to take it to Roswell residents. Are there any Roswell residents that would like to address this? Betty Price, so glad to see you. Everybody knows you, so I will, I will introduce you, so you don't have to introduce yourself. Aforementioned Betty Price, former city council member and state representative, we're so glad you're here. Thanks for being with us.
So you don't need to know my address either?
Probably, yeah, that's all right. I'll say it if you want me to.
Okay. If you could go back, please, I just had a comment or clarification on the definition of CBD. I'm a little troubled by the second, second sentence says this includes, but is not limited to oils, vitamins, blah, blah, blah. Does that mean within which cannabidiol exists or totally separate?
So that was, forgive me, Betty, because I, Michael brought that up as the third item, and I failed to put that on the dais conversation, so, and I think you wanted to address that as well, did you not?
So I'd say my, my intent that I mentioned earlier was excluding personal care and, and garments. That being said, for the technical question of yours, I think what you're asking is basically, oh, I, I see. You're, are you saying, is there a certain percentage, so let's just pick on, we'll say oils? Are you saying what's the percentage of that in the oil?
No, but if, if the shop sells oils, does the oil have to have cannabidiol in it? Or can it just be an oil shop that also sells CBD?
So it's my understanding, I understand the question now.
Yes.
So, Mr. Davidson, I believe the, the question is, and that's actually my concern. My, that's why I want to eliminate personal care and garments from it, because let's just say it's a shampoo store. So if it's a shampoo store, but then if fifty percent of the shampoo they sells ends up having that oil in it, that would make it so it's not a shampoo store, it's actually a CBD shop. That's how it works on this new definition. Is that right, Mr. Davidson?
That's correct.
And, and that was my concern with personal care being in there as well as, as well as garments. But does that answer your question?
And then what if they don't? If any of those items do not have any CBD in them whatsoever, then does that still go to the percent defining a CBD shop?
It's my understanding, Mr. Davidson, the percent that, of shampoos that don't have that CBD oil in it, that's basically what's going to that 50% they're taking. Is that, could you walk us through that, Mr. Davidson?
That's correct. So, if the shop had 51%, just plain oil, with no, nothing else in it, they would not be a CBD shop.
Okay, so this doesn't make it any more or less likely for a CBD, CBD to be sold in any shop?
Just a...
That's a fair question.
Yeah.
That's a fair question. No, it's trying to give a definition of CBD shop based upon the percentage of CBD items that have CBD in them. So, to your point, if someone had 50, 61% of their sales in non-CBD-related items, and 39% of their sales had CBD-related items, they would not be defined as a CBD shop.
I think that covers it. Thank you.
Okay, no, glad, thank you for the clarity. Mike, did you want to add any additional clarity? Because you, I really didn't do a good job of bringing that to the dius in terms of conversation.
Sure. So, Representative Price brought up a, really the heart of my thought process in having concerns with personal care and garments, because again, the way this defines, if we have a clothing store, but that clothing store, just by chance, half of their sales ended up being clothes that come, say, as from hemp, then that would actually not be considered a clothing shop anymore, be considered a CBD shop. And so, for that reason, that's why I would like to exclude personal care and garments from the definition of this.
Let me ask council, any thoughts on that? Councilmember Hall?
Just to restate it, and so that it's clear in my mind, basically, we don't, we're not identifying the percentage of the CDB oil or product within each product. We just, the total products can't, if they exceed more than 50%, they're considered a CDB shop.
Christine, thank you for that question, because it's such a good question. So, and, you know, repetition is hopefully the mother of skill. So, let's say Christine Hall has a clothing store, and you sell 60% of your clothes, it's regular clothing, right? And that's 60% of your sales. But you, 40% of your sales have items that have CBD oil. Some of those items may have 10% CBD oil, some of those items may have 50% CBD oil. I forgive my ignorance. Some may be 100% CBD oil, right? Inconsequential in terms of this definition.
Thank you. That was the clarity I needed.
That's the way I understand it. Okay, and so I apologize if I interrupted anybody's opportunity there. So, just to be clear, the suggestion by Councilmember Palermo, what's on the table, is to change the definition, the third item on CBD shop, one, defined a business establishment. Would you go back for me, please, sir? A business establishment, a business establishment for which more than 50% of sales are based on the retail sale of products related to or derived from CBD oil, cannabidiol or hemp. This includes, but is not limited to, oils, vitamins, supplements, food, period, and personal care is gone, correct? And garments, correct, sir?
Correct with the clarification that I believe, as I read this, we have food, period, and then say, this excludes personal care and garments.
Fair enough. That's easy enough, right, David? Everybody good with, I'm going to understand that? Yes, sir. Councilmember Warthlin?
Just a quick question, as we've been going through this. If you, if someone is a CBD shop in the community, are they required to turn in their sales for us to determine 50% of their revenue?
Willie? I sure hope so, brother. Mr. Knight, do you want to make any comments on that? Our city clerk to the back, she stays back there so she never have to talk. Marley Press, very clever, so she doesn't have to comment on it. Randy, do you want to comment on this, sir?
I'd mention, yes, that I actually confirmed with our finance director, Mr. Luckett, that we are capable of ensuring that we receive 50%, or receive receipts, which would account for the actual sales of products at said shops and stores. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, but it's a great question, Will. All right, I'm going to go back to Roswell residents. Are there any Roswell residents that would like to speak on this matter? Yes, sir. Mr. Perry Dragon, Transportation TAC member, welcome, sir. We've never seen you before, but we're glad you're here.
I rarely say anything publicly, but I just wanted to point out something here. First off, to be clear, I don't use CBD products. I don't care if anybody else does or doesn't. I have no dog in that hunt. But looking at that definition, it seems to me it's totally unenforceable. I don't know how you could enforce that unless you get in the books and look at every single product the store sells, determine if it has CBD, and how much, and what, how much money comes from it, and so forth and so on. I just don't see how it would be enforceable.
Excellent point. Any thoughts on that from any of our esteemed staff or council members? Councilmember Palermo?
Two things. So, one, we do enforce this currently from a food and alcohol standpoint. So, that is something that happens where a restaurant has to have at least 50% sales of food, or else they're in violation. So, it is, it is something that there is a precedent for. That being said, tonight is the first reading, and I'm certainly in favor of moving this forward. And we also do have a precedent in the city as well, multiple different examples, where we've set the stage with creating the ordinance in place, and there's always the opportunity later on to decide through resolution if there's some different process or thing that we can enhance. So, from that standpoint, I still am interested in moving this forward, but certainly I think there'll be need for more discussion if the city is to look at enforcing it.
Perry, I will tell you, I don't want to open up Pandora's Box, because your question kind of does that for me. Historically, always, always had a, at the end of the day, particularly because I'm glad Michael brought that up, particularly on F and B, particularly related, because that's usually where it falls. And at the end of the day, it's often self-reporting, because the reality is, is that the mechanism does not exist, nor would you want to put the mechanism in your government, I think, to be that exhaustive in illuminating every cell, right? I don't think you want the government at any level, including your local government, coming in and examining every cell you make. So, at the end of the day, it is, there is a limit of, there's a piece of integrity, and self-examination, and self-reporting that does go to this. And you cannot, I think, realistically guard every rail that potentially someone could abuse. Like, let's be, if you're a CBD shop, you know you're a CBD shop, right? And so, you know, and if you accidentally become a CBD shop, let's say you open up a business, Perry opens up his business for his, he sells his toy cars, which are fabulous, but you add some CBD stuff to the shop, and all of a sudden, the CBD shop becomes the predominant part of your cells, right? And you didn't think of yourself as a CBD shop. But oh, my gosh, 80% of your cells are now CBD-related. Yeah, we're probably not going to pick that up instantaneously in the reports that go to City Hall. And so, there is a mechanism that exactly, at the end of the day, the businesses have a duty to self-report. So, I think your question is a great question, but it's applicable to so many things we do anyway. And I would say, and I would answer the other way, do you really want your government having that zealous of approach in terms of examining? And I would say you probably don't, and I don't either. So, all right, but thank you for asking. Yes, ma'am. Janet Russell, welcome. I'm going to just call out everybody tonight. This is more fun than you having to announce who you are. I'll say who you are.
I came in a little late. I was talking to somebody. But with regard to what Perry said, first of all, liquor sales and food sales, Michael, have to be, food sales must be 51%, not 50%. Big difference, because I remember when we enacted that. And that, of course, has gone by the wayside, because now we have breweries that sell nothing but food, and occasionally have a food truck show up. Now, I don't really care, but does, and I really don't know, does the state have any knowledge of how much CBD is sold? Do they have to report to the state what they sell? I honestly don't know, because that would be the reporting system then. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. If they're already reporting to the state, X, whatever, then all we do is tap into that report to the state. Again, I don't really give a rip about CBD. I didn't do pot in the 60s, and I'm not doing it now. However, please don't say that they'll self-report, because ha, 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 if that's the thing, I got a bridge in Tucson I want to sell you. It's not going to happen. So, I think we need to decide. Find out from the state, do they self-report? I mean, do they have to report their sales? Is there a different sales tax on CBD than there is on other stuff? All of those things, I don't know. But it seems to me that if we're going to say 50%, well, 51% is alcohol over food. So, 50% doesn't make, isn't even smart. Just thoughts that popped into my mind. I don't really care. I do remember when this little building that's down here next to the cemetery, that's currently got plywood all over the front windows, because somebody threw a rock through it. Feel like I live in Yemen. I remember when Mayor Pug Mayberry was sitting where you're sitting, Kurt, and somebody wanted to put in a head shop there, and that was an active elementary school. And I can remember it like it was yesterday, when he stood there and went, that is not happening. Police chief, go put a padlock on the door. It is never happening in this town. And it didn't, because they wanted to sell full drug paraphernalia there at the time, bongs and everything else. This was back in the maybe early 80s. I thought that was hilarious. But funny how the more things change, the more they stay the same, right? Just has a different name. So, I don't know. I just think, first of all, you need to redefine as 51%, not 50%, otherwise that's dumb. And find out how we can contact the state and see what they do, because, believe me, the state is already going to keep track of all that stuff, whether we want it or not. Every time you use their phone, they know what you're doing. So, I don't, I'm sure they know everything else.
Thank you, Janet. Point well taken. Any thoughts? Great, great point well taken. Any other thoughts from Roswell residents on the matter at hand? Okay. None being, I'll bring it back to council. Yes, sir. Peter?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank my fellow council members for being open to discussion and for continuing discussion. We have a second reading ahead of us. It sounds like we've got a couple more little things to check along the way. But so far, this has been a very, very good exercise for us, that I think we've handled well.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Sarah?
President Swift, those were excellent questions from Mr. Dragon about how that would be enforceable. Councilmember Vanstrom's point, I think it's something that we could possibly talk about as we move forward into the second reading. I also do encourage any residents who do feel strongly about this, they're more than welcome to contact any council members or the mayor anytime to let us know their strong feelings about this. But with that, due to the changes that were made by not only Councilmember Palermo, but also with input from the others, the ongoing conversation, that I appreciate the fact that everyone collectively has let this evolve naturally, as opposed to just keeping it as it was during, well, I guess during committee meeting. So, letting this naturally evolve over time and letting input drive the process. I do agree with Councilmember Vanstrom that I think commercial heavy is a little more fitting, and it also doesn't relegate it. In private conversations, I've jokingly been calling this the industrial red light district. And that was kind of what I'm trying to avoid, of just relegating it to one very specific area next to the hospital, which my concern was, if this was your first time ever going to Roswell, say your sister had a baby, and you're going to North Fulton, that's the only place we have industrial light district, is right next to the hospital. I would hate for that to be the impression of our city. I do think that it guides fair land use. I agree that it would hopefully incentivize the best and highest land use in other areas, also hopefully incentivizes better and higher land use development in east Roswell. So, with that, I would say that I'm amenable to these changes and moving it forward, and encourage the public to let us know their thoughts.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other thoughts or comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Warthlin?
Very quick question for Director Gaines. From the state standpoint, if you have a CBD shop, do they give you a license for that business?
No, they do not. The state does not hold any regulation over any CBD product that contains 0.3% or less THC. So, if it's 0.3% or less, state does not regulate it.
So, in that, in that same mindset, this would then go to Attorney Davidson. Do we, as a city, would we be interested in putting a license on CBD here within the city, or is that a state overlay?
So, the state has made it legal.
Okay.
So, it's an allowed product in the state of Georgia. So, it'd be, we could not make it illegal.
Right. Reason, the reason for the question is, if we, within the city of Roswell, have a license that is portrayed and put on the window, or put behind the cash register, that it makes it very clear this is a CBD shop. I'm just trying to go after ways that we can try to enforce.
Will, you're trying to find a way to answer some of the questions that have been raised, is bringing clarity to the business, and that Roswell has clarity about that business. Is that correct?
Sure.
And I guess that's, that's an interesting perspective and prospect, and something that's really not been talked about before. It does answer, to some degree, some of the questions. And I guess you could say you put Roswell's, forgive me, stamp of, hey, this is Roswell's CBD shop, right? There's nothing extra legal about that, and/or illegal about it. It's just simply, city has the right to do that. It's not, it's confirming what the state's already has said is legal. It's not making it illegal. It's just saying, we're aware of this business, and we put our Roswell stamp of this is a CBD shop. Is that something that sounds, is that something you need to do some research on, probably, I would imagine?
Yeah, I would probably need to look at it. Now, when people do come in and apply for their business license, they do put down what they're doing.
Right.
More than likely, it's just going to say retail sales. So, it's not, not going to give us that kind of information.
Right. And the way that I'm trying to come up with a regulation, I hate to say regulation, but a way of enforcing to make sure that the shops are selling within the intended purpose of this definition, is everybody understands, one of the easiest ways of skating the law is to buy something in cash. And if we have this definition, and we have this stamp in the window, that is, that is one way that we can, from a eyes' distance, you know, make sure that this is being watched, or being relegated, whatever the case may be, just have an extra, extra level of interest there.
Just off the top of my head, and that's probably a bad place, but we, maybe we could add a line on the business license application. If it is retail sale, do you intend to sell more than 50% CBD-related products? No, or are you going to? If the answer is no, well, there's an ordinance violation if they start selling and continue to sell, because then they would be falsifying a document.
Sure. Thank you.
Will, thanks for bringing that up. And David, thank you. Christine, yes, ma'am?
Just an idea, and Director Luckett can probably help speak to this, but they do have to put down their NICS code when people apply for a license, a business license, also called occupational license. So, the NICS code, I believe, is 446191 for CBD stores. If they are going in as a CBD store, they would rightfully put that down as their NICS code. That is, that's one pass. Now, if somebody puts down a NICS code for a retail store and is secretly doing CBD and going into a place they're not supposed to, I don't, you know, that's a code enforcement thing, and we'd have to follow up on that.
What is the, what is the reflex? What is the prescription on that? What is the prescription on that?
To clarify, is the question, what if somebody puts down a NICS code that they really don't comply with?
Christine, thank you. If we have for clarity, which I'm sure, I'm sure it's never happened.
Never happens.
Ever?
I will say that, you know, if, if, a lot of times, the name of the business can clue you into a discrepancy between the NICS classification, and our staff will follow up on that. And, you know, we do take them at their word, but if there is a continued discrepancy, you're correct in that we could utilize code enforcement to follow up on that and make sure that, you know, according to what they submitted in their business application.
But other than, I mean, what, sorry, Ryan, what does that mean? What's the prescription there? So, hey, calm dev, get out there. Now what happens?
One more thing to add to what Director Luckett said. And depending on what the business license says, because it comes through zoning, and the planners review it, and we have to sign off on it. Many times, if we don't know what it means, we ask for more clarification through business registration, and then they reach out to the applicant and say, you know, what does this mean? Because there are times when you're not actually sure what they've put on their business application. And we've called them, we email them, and we ask for more information. So what City Attorney David Davidson indicated with the adding a line to the business registration application form would be a start, and that would be a help for us to review it, because that's where we're going to have to catch it. We're not going to know anywhere else as to where a CBD shop might be going on the business.
Thank you, Jackie. Michael?
With all due respect to this great body and the great feedback from staff, I think ultimately, it's our job to make sure we have the right code, which is really setting the policies forward and setting the policies. And whether it's between now and second reading, or it's after a second reading, I would expect then for staff to be able to, to really come up with their, their proposals in those aspects. But tonight is just first reading, and I think without a doubt, this is hopefully giving some good, good things for staff to think about.
Mike, thanks for that clarification. So ladies and gentlemen, with that being said, do you have some clarity of some pieces to pursue in relation to the discussion? Or do you need some further clarification?
I believe we have what we need, sir, yes.
Okay. One thing I'd add, Ryan, it's kind of like that last, it's always a question I have, like, so what's the resolution here? Right? Like, okay, I hear the process, but what actually happens? And does anything actually happen? And I think that would be my question, like...
Well, tonight is the first read of the proposed ordinance. A motion is yet to be made, but it sounds like we're trending in the direction of...
It's about to, Jason.
Moving, moving to approve the first read with some changes based on the direction. Jackie and I have both been taking notes, and we can put our heads together. We actually have a meeting set up with our council liaison, a standing monthly meeting, the first of which will be next Thursday. So sure, this will be one of the primary topics of that meeting, and we can drill down to it and make sure that we've got, you know, the base of this discussion correct, so that we can come back at the second read with language that you all find amiable.
Thank you, Jason. With that being said, Councilmember Palermo, would you like to make a motion?
I would, Mayor Wilson, thank you. And I think it's, I think just another great testament of this council working together. Certainly, with the motion I'm going to make, my preference would be to be excluding some of these items, and vice versa. I'm sure it'd include, there's some other items where I'm sure I probably might prefer to include it more, but I think this is a good compromise that, again, truly does...
Mike, can I interrupt you? Who's got control of the screen?
And actually, I want it left on this screen if it's all right.
What, this screen first?
Yeah, because I'm naming this part first.
Okay.
That's all right.
Very good, sir.
But, thank you, Mayor. You know, I think this, I think this is a good move for citizens, again, for just really the residents of Roswell. Again, big picture items especially, love to certainly point out, the vape, the vape one, I think is just really a big, big win for the residents, as well as, you just used car dealerships with how many we have, and there's so many other examples here. So I think this is good working together. I think this is, is an improvement. So I would like to motion to approve the first reading, which is based off of the initiation that we had, so as staff presented, with the updates of, first of all, update to the Section C, the definition of CBD shop, where it's going to say, it all stays the same until this includes but is not limited to oils, vitamins, supplements, and food, period. This excludes personal care and garments. And then the other change section being that dispensary, CBD, and tattoo parlor would be conditional use within CH. So that's the addition of those three being added to CH as conditional use. And that is my motion.
And you got, but there's also, I think, what's in here...
So planning commission's recommendation is, the second one is being followed, the first one is, is being ignored.
Being stricken.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, so a motion is on the dais from Councilmember Palermo. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Christine Hall. All understand the motion as designed? Okay. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for your great work, everybody, and we look forward to the second reading. All right, with that being said, next is the city attorney's report. City Attorney David Davidson, will you read your item on your report, please, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I have is a recommendation for closure to discuss personnel litigation in real estate.
Thanks very much. So have a motion for closure? Motion by Councilmember Hills. I mean, Councilmember Beeson, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Warthlin. All those in favor of closure, please raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we go to closure. Being that there are no other items, this is Mayor and Council meeting, January 23rd, 2023, is adjourned. Thank you very much.